All right, I'd like to call this meeting if you're in Newark City Council Board. I'll just call a roll.
Ms. Hall?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Marmee?
Here.
Mr. Ratt?
Here.
Mr. Ralletta?
Here.
Mr. Blake?
I'm here.
Mr. Bub?
Here.
Mr. Koss?
Here.
Mrs. Floyd?
Here.
And Mr. Frazier?
Present.
We have all here present this evening. Next on the agenda is the invocation by Mr. Johnson, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
You bow your heads and again take a few moments for your own personal prayers. We come as your servants, O Lord. Be with us in our deliberations. We are aware of the sacrifice men gave so long ago on D-Day that we could meet in freedom in a land where opinions might vary but where there's no penalty for thinking. Bless us and be with us. Be with those in need, be with those in joy, be with those who seek reason and opportunity. And may we know your will and may we ever serve you and our fellow men. In your name we pray. Amen. Amen.
Wade, do you want to start for me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Thank you, William. Next on the agenda, we have caucus. That's a time for council to discuss anything that may concern him about the agenda this evening. Do we have any? Okay. See, nothing. Next, we have the minutes of our May 16th, 2016 meeting. Is your motion to approve those?
No move.
Motion by Mr. Johnson, seconded by Mr. Ratt. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
At the same time, I pass. Thank you. We have nothing under appointments this evening. Under reports of standing committee, we have one from finance, one from street, and one from safety. Without objection, those will be received and filed. We also have one report from city officials tonight. Mark Joads, the city tax administrator, our operating report for the period ending May 15th, 2016. Also without objection, that will be received and filed. Under petitions, we have one petition to vacate the alley that runs north and south between Fairlon Avenue and Woodlon Avenue. I think that was discussed in committee. That will be received and filed. Under communications, we have one from LAPD, an invitation to the 7th Annual LAPD Golf Outing on July 23rd. One from Teresa Moats, an invitation to the North Williams Street area block watch celebration. That is August 2nd. And one from Roger Loomis, our utility superintendent, a list of properties that are being sent to the auditor for liens for past due water, sewer, and stormwater bills. Again, without objection, those will be received and filed. Next on the agenda this evening, we have comments from citizens. There are two times for citizens' comments. One is now and one is after the legislation. This is not a debate with council. This is just an opportunity for you to stand up and give us your opinion. And if you'll just raise your hand, I'll recognize you and we'll start. Yes, sir. If you'd just come up and give us your name and address for the record and tell us what you'd like to tell us.
My name, Mark Dixon. I live on 1913 Graffden Road. I want to pop a hole, Graffden Road, when I buy dinner thing about it. People think city have too much money. What go on?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, what happened? I like ride my bike, prove on the bike, try to say go. Make a neighborhood pick up popcorn, lemon and popcorn. And maybe home pay must shed back on my house, give more popcorn. What happened? May take my bike out, get one pot hole. If pop tail city live on that.
Can you help me with that question or is that a question?
City.
Is bike hit a pothole and city liable?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, no.
Why not?
Well, that just does not happen that way.
If, if, say if may drop car, say if I could drop car, if car hit pot hole, what happened city pay for that?
Yeah. Well, I'll defer to the law director second. Am I correct there, Mr. Law Director?
Actually, there's a process by which if that happens.
Yeah.
There is a claim that can be made in the service director's office and then each claim is analyzed individually. So is the possibility? Generally speaking, the answer is no, but there are circumstances under which the city can be liable.
Yeah, somebody lost to on that.
So if you have an issue with your bike getting a pothole?
Yeah.
Then I would make a claim.
Make a claim to the service director's office.
Yeah. That's what I think.
Yes.
Person avenue, apple person go to Graffden Road, that new work well bad.
Okay.
That only happens. Oh, one more thing. I talked one people outside one time. My country people, country boy, not city boy. Said country wanna drink well good. City want no crap. That's what I think.
All right. Thanks.
Yeah.
Ma'am?
Good evening.
Hi.
My name is Kim Beam. My address is PO Box 191, West Jefferson, Ohio, 43162. I have frequently had correspondence with the law director, Mr. Sasson, with copies to Jeff Hall, Mayor Jeff Hall, and with Police Chief Barry Connell. I come to you tonight because I think it's very important that City Council of Newark knows about the selective prosecution practices of Mr. Sasson's office and also the selective enforcement and dereliction of duty of the police chief's office. I have endured for the last six years retribution from the Licken County Sheriff's Office and a Licken County prosecutor, Ken Oswald. I proved in 2013 that a report done in 2010 that claimed I was violent and had a club was nothing but a lie. Mr. Sasson reviewed that report in 2011, would not even consider the evidence, wrote a very nasty message about me indicating that I was the one that was completely wrong. In 2013, the people that falsified that report admitted they were the ones for the club, I never had a club, and the information was completely false. Am I wrong, Mr. Sasson?
No, no, no. This is not a.
Okay. And at that point, he did nothing. Of course, Sheriff Thorpe did nothing. And in the meantime, I proved that and was put on YouTube videos. At the same time, I exposed Prosecutor Ken Oswald's EEOC claim. You saw it in the Newark Advocate because I found it. I made the Newark Advocate aware of it and pushed them until they addressed it. Since that time, I have been prosecuted for misdemeanors by the Ohio Attorney General's Office because Mr. Sasson recused himself from prosecuting me for misdemeanors. I was also investigated by the BCI because Mr. Oswald and Mr. Thorpe went to the BCI in violation of my constitutional rights, which the Ohio Attorney General's Office included in the BCI report. I spent 10 days in jail for a crime I did not commit that was a function of Mr. Sasson's selective prosecution and his choice not to prosecute. Normally, in this situation where there was no violence, there were no threats, his office has a practice of saying, "That's a civil situation. You deal with it in civil court." Instead, he let the BCI come after me. Since that time, Mr. Oswald did a nice job of prosecuting me in the press, even though he was not the prosecutor on this situation, it was misdemeanors, by having Bethany Brunner and WCLT make stories about me being charged with harassment of the sheriff and State Representative Stebbleton. Now, Stebbleton lives in Lancaster, so I couldn't be prosecuted in Licken County for that. So they should have known that was a lie. There's nothing that they had to show that. So I am currently suing the Newark Advocate and WCLT, among others, over that libel and slander. In that libel suit, or in the libel suit, Bethany Brunner filed an affidavit that is absolutely false. She knows it's false. The evidence shows that she knows it's false. There's no way it could be true. I asked the Newark police to look into it. Now, I've asked the Newark police to look into a lot of things about this situation because most of it occurred in Newark. Mr. Connell, or Chief Connell, has chosen not to do reports, obviously dereliction of duty on his part. He only allows me to talk to Detective Tim Fleming. Fleming has not done reports until this last one on Bethany Brunner. He took it to the law director's office. I had asked the law director to recuse himself. If he recused himself because he had a conflict of interest with the BCI involved, he certainly should have recused himself in this portion, and he did not. He decided to say that Bethany Brunner was telling the truth. Well, she was not telling the truth. Clearly, she was not telling the truth, and the documents she has show that. And fortunately, that's before I requested contempt charges against Bethany Brunner and her attorneys. Hopefully, Judge Mars Lane will be rolling on that soon. But in the meantime, I just want you to be aware that I know Mr. Sasson is elected official, so the council has no power over him. The council does, and the mayor does, have power over the police department and Chief Connell's choice to selectively enforce the law. And that's what's happening in Newark. Selective prosecution and selective enforcement. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Just comments?
Hello, I'm Tim Collins. I live at 535 Wells Hills Road in Granville, but I do own a business, Miniman Press, down on 44 South Fourth Street. I'm also here representing the Downtown Newark Association. We ran into a problem recently with the Downtown Newark Association. We have an event planned for this, the final Friday, which is the 24th of this month. And it's a car show that we've had. We had one last year. The city was nice enough to be able to shut down a road for us last year to be able to put it in. Now, that space is not going to be available, and we've been trying to work for the last, informally for the last two or three months, but we tried to formalize things within the last week. And we just found out today that they told us that we could not put it on any one of the roads that were out there and that they offered us a parking lot. But the problem is, parking lot, we went over there, measured it all out, can put about 40 cars in there. We're expecting anywhere from 75 to 100 cars that are going to be coming downtown for that final Friday. So what we were hopefully coming here to do is bring it up to the city council and the mayor to try and see if we can work something out. We do have, you know, I have a map of what we propose that we would like to do. Can I hand that? Okay. We're not looking for a very large space of land. If you look, we were offered today, and it was a generous offer. We appreciate it, but we're going to need more space. That's the only thing. If you look in the blue on the map when you get it, that's the parking lot next to the jail, and that's where we can get about 40 cars. What we're looking to do is potentially close down the road that you see in the green portion there, which would be between Walnut and Canal. We'd just be closing down that one section. Walnut would be open, Canal would be open. You'd be able to do a U-turn if you had to or go up north because we understand that the Third Street project should be opened up on that day there. But what we would like to do is, if we could, is get that green section at least. If there's another area that would be better, it was suggested to us just while we were out in the lobby way that potentially where the Third Street from Market Street actually up north, that that was the day that tentatively, we all know because of weather, it was going to open up on that day. If we could put it there, it would be great. The Downtown Newark Association is trying to work in conjunction with the city best as possible. I mean, our job as an association is to bring as many people into downtown as we can. And we would like to work through this so that we can bring these people down here. Last year, we had over 1,000 people for our Cruisin', and this one's not a Cruisin'. This is actually a car show. So people will be coming here, they'll be winning trophies. We're going to have sponsors all set up. We, you know, Park National Bank and Licken Memorial Hospital are final Friday sponsors. And currently, we don't have a location to be able to put that on. So all we're doing is kind of asking if there's something we can do with the city to be able to work on this, to be able to get this, so that we can actually have this event.
Does anybody?
I just have one question.
Yes.
And again, this is not a question and answer, so it's a little bit out of order. We're talking about June 24th, is that the final Friday?
Yes.
That's the.
Yes.
And we've got the Market District open, we've got final Friday, and we've got three dog night, hit the middle on that night?
Correct.
Okay.
And that's why they told us that, you know, to be honest with you, we would love to have been able to put this thing on North Park, but we understand that the parking, they were talking about this. If you look at this, it's probably the farthest away from the Three Dog Night parking that you can get. But we also see this as a benefit towards the Canal Market because by being able to put it right there, we're going to bring in another, you know, potentially 500 to 1,000 people in that will be able to see the Canal Market, too.
And what time is this event?
The show, pulling in at 4:00 and then it goes until 7:00. 8:00, sorry. 8:00.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Thanks for your time.
We move on to the legislation. Ordinance is on the second reading, 16-13.
Ordinance 16-13 by Mr. Frazier, Mr. Koss, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Ratt. An ordinance amending the position classification, pay range, and department authorization tables of the Department of Safety, Division of Police by creating the classification of information technology specialists and setting the compensation therefore and abolishing one police officer position.
You prefer the second reading of 16-13. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Bub?
I'll make a motion that we adopt ordinance 16-13.
Motion by Mr. Bub?
Second.
Second by Mr. Johnson. Is there a discussion on 16-13?
Mr. President, I would like to make an amendment to this legislation to remove the language dealing with abolishing a police officer position.
All right, Mr. Ralletta, what is your amendment?
To remove the language abolishing one police officer position.
In the title?
In the legislation itself. So it looks like Section 3 as well. And then we just have the table at the bottom there.
So in the title, we'd like to strike and abolishing one police officer position. Correct. Section 3, you'd like to strike?
Correct.
And then what else was added?
In the table.
Oh, in the table, you want to strike police officer there?
Correct.
And a motion by Mr. Ralletta to amend, or second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Blake. Any discussion on this amendment?
Yeah, Mr. President.
Mr. Ralletta?
Yeah, I know how important this IT position is, and that's why I supported this fully in committee. I did state I have concerns about removing the police officer position, so that's why I'm making this amendment.
Mr. Ralletta, any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Frazier?
We heard from the chief in that committee that there is, I believe, 14 other vacant police officer positions that we're not able to fill, and that this is more of a trying to get the right person for the job than a decrease in our police force. I don't see why we would have to abolish a police officer, but I also understand the constraints that we have. And then I really rely on the chief for what he does. And so I'm going to take his word at that, and I'm going to follow what he recommends. And so with that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Scott?
I guess my question, I'm not sure who, maybe this is for Chief Connell, I'm not sure. The number of officers we have right now is approximately 70. Is that where we're?
As of today, we're.
Chief, do you want to go ahead and answer that?
As of today, we're sitting at 67. But we have plans to potentially hire four soon.
So we have 67, you're planning on hiring four?
Yes.
Would I be able to ask the chief?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Chief, the goal number is 84. Is that what our, kind of our ultimate goal number is to?
It would be mine, sure. I'd take 100 if you would give me that.
And I'm assuming 84, I think 80 is the number for.
I think it was the high number, maybe.
Okay. And is there, from your point of view, is there an advantage to decreasing that goal number? I mean, I understand we're not losing a police job, but is there, do you see an advantage to reducing the ultimate goal?
In the near future, I don't see an advantage either way. It doesn't change the numbers.
I see. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. President? Are you done, Mr. Scott?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Blake?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Are you ready to go with the chief? Should we let him sit down?
Thank you, chief. Yeah, I just, general comments. My understanding from the discussion with, from the committee and from talking to, actually messaging with the chief earlier today, is that there's, you know, the desire is just to have an information technology position. So really, the discussion of having the position abolished or not abolished is more of a bookkeeping thing than anything if we want to keep it there. When revenues get to the point where we're able to hire more police officers, and that would be great, we can send them off, hire some more police officers, and we could do that. But if it stays on the books, then it just stays there as an empty position because it's not funded. So, but I think ultimately, we want to express to our citizens that we want to have open positions and wanting to get to a high number of police officers, and so that's why I'll be supporting the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. Anyone else that has not spoken yet? Mr. Marmee?
Thank you, Mr. President. In the past, we have usually abolished all positions that were not unfunded, and we kind of did that clean up about every two years. We've abolished positions that we, you know, hopefully someday could come back in other departments and other areas. We're still leaving a number of unfunded police officer positions open in anticipation that hopefully we can. I don't believe that abolishing one position is in order to make sure we know that this position is going to be an information technology specialist, that's something that's saying that anybody does not want more police officers. It's just a matter of a funding issue. We have not cleaned up in recent past because we do hope that things change and that we can fill other positions, not only in the police department, in the fire department, and also in other departments. Every department has been impacted. In other departments, we've completely abolished positions, though. I mean, we don't have any unfunded positions. We've done some changes in order to do that. And we have not done that across the board with the police department. And I believe that this is just, we're just making sure that we recognize that this position needs to be an information technology specialist, and we are not filling it with a police officer any longer. And therefore, one of those positions is being abolished, and we have, like was said before, we have a number of still unfunded, plenty that we could fill it on an instant. And then not only that, who creates new positions? This council. So if we do get into a position where we can afford more police officers or more firefighters, I guarantee we can create the positions. That'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Marmee. Anyone else that hasn't spoken? Mr. Ratt?
Yeah, it'd be great if we could fill 14 fire, or, I'm sorry, police officer positions somewhat. It'd probably be better if we could, if we had the money to buy some vehicles that could take the police officers that we have now to and from calls safely and reliably. If we had extra money right now, I would vote for that before I would vote for adding personnel. Because right now, our fleet is horrible. And that's where the real demand is right now, quite honestly.
Mr. Ratt, anyone else? Mr. Ralletta?
Thank you. You know, like I said, it's completely necessary to create this IT position, but it is completely unnecessary to remove this police officer position. You know, these positions were created for a reason, and in the future, if our financial situation improves, I believe the city needs to work to fill these positions. It hurts absolutely nothing if we leave this position open. You know, positions have been removed in the past, and I don't think we need to send the message that we're trying to eliminate more police officer positions. I think we need to send the message that we will work to fill these positions in the future. And yes, it is this council's responsibility to create or remove positions, and it's the administration's authority to choose whether to fill those or not. So I believe that we should leave this position open for the future.
Mr. Ralletta, anyone else?
Mr. President?
I'd just encourage this body to pass this ordinance as it stated. You know, I think what we run into, and this happens every year, when, it always leads the argument later of, you know, you have 13 unfunded, 15 unfunded, 14, and it just becomes a two hours of conversations kind of null and void because we don't have the money to fill it. So I think we need to do it the right way. Obviously, there's money, you know, if it comes forth, falls out of the tree here sometime soon, I think we'll be glad to create many new police officer positions. Everybody would want that.
Mr. Blake? Anyone else? I'll just call a roll vote on the amendment.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Marmee?
No.
Mr. Ratt?
No.
Mr. Ralletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
No.
Mr. Koss?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
No.
That's five. The chair votes no. Now, we have back to ordinance 16-13 as stated. Do we have any discussion on that? I'll just call a roll vote.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Ratt?
Yes.
Mr. Ralletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Koss?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
16-13 passes 10-0. Next, we have ordinance on the first reading, 16-14.
Ordinance 16-14 by Mr. Marmee, Mr. Koss, Mrs. Floyd. It's an ordinance to provide for the issuance of $1.1 million of bond anticipation notes and anticipation of issuance of bonds for the purpose refunding outstanding bond anticipation notes previously issued for the purpose of paying the cost of capital improvements, including Fire Station Number One improvements, including demolition, professional design, and property acquisition, City Hall parking improvements, service complex construction improvements, and the South Second Street Bridge repair, together with additional Fire Station Number One improvements, Phase One, additional funds for the Fire Station improvements, and all necessary pertinences thereto, and declaring an emergency.
16-14 is on the first reading, but it is an emergency, so what is your wish?
Mr. President?
Mr. Marmee?
I make a motion to adopt ordinance 16-14.
Motion by Mr. Marmee, seconded by Mrs. Floyd. Do we have any discussion on 16-14? Same not a hall, please call a roll vote.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Ratt?
Yes.
Mr. Ralletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Koss?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
And Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
16-14 passes 10-0. Next on the first reading, we have 16-15.[1737.51] Next on the first reading, we have sixteen dash fifteen.
Ordinance sixteen dash fifteen by Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd. It's an ordinance authorizing the issuance of not to exceed five million six hundred and twenty, or six hundred and twenty thousand dollars worth of capital improvement bonds for the purpose of refunding a portion of outstanding bond anticipation notes previously issued for the purpose of paying the cost of capital improvements, including fire station number one improvements, including demolition, professional design, and property acquisition, one point one million city hall parking improvement, three hundred thousand service complex improvements, two hundred thousand, service complex, two hundred thousand in the South Second Street Bridge repairs, six hundred thousand, together with all necessary pertinences thereto, and additional borrowing of one million to pay part of the cost of fire station number one, phase one, construction improvements, and additional funds for fire station improvements, three point four million, and declaring an emergency.
Sixteen dash fifteen is on its first reading. It's also an emergency. What is your wish?
Mr. President?
Mr. Marmy?
I make a motion to adopt ordinance sixteen dash fifteen.
Motion by Mr. Marmy, second by Mrs. Floyd. Do we have any discussion on sixteen dash fifteen? Seeing none, Honored, please call a roll vote.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Ruleta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
And Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Sixteen dash fifteen passes ten zero. Next on the first reading, we have sixteen dash sixteen.
Ordinance sixteen dash sixteen by Mr. Frazier, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cost, and ordinance amending chapter six eighteen of the codified ordinances of the city of Newark.
Much shorter.
Yes.
Sixteen dash sixteen, it will be held for two weeks for a second reading. Next, we go on to resolutions on the second reading, sixteen dash forty-eight.
Resolution sixteen dash forty-eight by Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Raff. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
Heard the second reading of sixteen dash forty-eight. What is your wish?
Mr. President? I make a motion to adopt resolution sixteen dash forty-eight.
Motion by Mr. Marmy?
Second.
Second by Mr. Johnson. Is there any discussion on sixteen dash forty-eight? Seeing none, Honored, please call a roll vote.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Ruleta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
And Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Sixteen dash forty-eight passes ten zero. Next, on the second reading, we have sixteen dash forty-nine.
Resolution sixteen dash forty-nine by Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Raff. A resolution designating allocations of hotel lodging excise tax revenue generated pursuant to chapter eight ninety-two of the codified ordinances of the city of Newark, Ohio.
Heard the second reading of sixteen dash forty-nine. What is your wish?
Mr. President?
Mr. Marmy?
I make a motion to adopt resolution sixteen dash forty-nine.
Motion by Mr. Marmy, second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion on sixteen dash forty-nine?
Mr. President?
Mr. Blake?
I, Mr. President, I just want to make a comment that I appreciate the legislation that's come forward before us today. I think White's Field is going to be a beautiful facility for our community, and it's going to bring a lot of the tourism and generate some activity here in our community that we so well need. I just hope that our superintendent of Newark City Schools recognizes that out of their own funds, the permanent improvement funds, that there are elementary schools in our community that can benefit from improvements. One big example is Ben Franklin Elementary School. We've been having some discussions about even having a shelter house at that facility, so hoping that superintendent you will do some more with elementary schools and embrace the concept of community schools and wanting to generate the school as not just a place of learning, but also a place of relationship building within the neighborhood. So I hope that the superintendent will take those words of advisement, but I will support this tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Blake, anyone else? Honored, please call a roll vote.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Ruleta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
And Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Sixteen dash forty-nine passes ten zero. And now, we have resolutions on the first reading, sixteen dash fifty.
Resolution sixteen dash fifty by Mr. Marmy, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cost. The resolution appropriating money for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
Sixteen dash fifty. Mr. Marmy?
Mr. President, I make a motion to waive the two-day reading rule on resolution sixteen dash fifty.
Motion to waive the two-day reading rule by Mr. Marmy, second by Mrs. Floyd. Mr. Marmy?
Yes, this is dealing with a combination, and we always try to expedite those dollars because it goes back to the employee.
Thank you, Mr. Marmy. Honored, please call a roll, waive the two-day reading rule.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Ruleta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
And Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Two-day reading rule has been waived, Mr. Marmy.
Mr. President, I make a motion to adopt resolution sixteen dash fifty.
Motion by Mr. Marmy?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any other discussion on sixteen dash fifty? Seeing none, Honored, please call a roll vote.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Ruleta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
And Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Sixteen dash fifty passes ten zero. And finally, this evening, per legislation, we have sixteen dash fifty-one.
Resolution sixteen dash fifty-one by Mr. Marmy, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cost. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
Sixteen dash fifty-one will be held for two weeks for a second reading. And that concludes our legislation this evening. Thank you very much. Okay. Next on the agenda, we have comments from citizens. This is your second opportunity. Again, this is not in favor of council. This is just an opportunity for you to step up and tell us your comment. We have anyone? Mr. Bush?
William Butcher, two sixty-three Union Street. I just have one comment to make. That there's some potholes over at Cherryvine Road. We've been hitting them really hard here lately, and I'm just wondering what the city's going to be doing about that, and I'd just like to know when that new section of Cherryvine Road is going to be open. Let me just tell you, sixteen west, sixteen east gets really, really balled up during that construction run, that construction, everybody coming up and down that sixteen west, sixteen east. It gets, sometimes it gets balled up, and sometimes traffic floods there. Like it was five o'clock rush hour, my double ten forecast should most be clear tonight. Low in Mississippi, it's high only mid-sixties by tomorrow morning. So get your double ten, my forecast.
Thank you, William. Anyone else for the second section of citizens' comments? Daniel? Would anyone else like to speak? Are we done? After Daniel? Okay.
Daniel Crawford, one sixty-three South Second Street. I don't have a prepared speech, so don't worry. I come to, you're probably familiar with the movement, the move to amend effort that I'm involved in, the organization I'm actually helped to create, the ninety-nine percent of Newark County Central Ohio, where for the past year or so, we've been going at it trying to collect signatures to address the Citizens United ruling by the Supreme Court. And may remember, in 2014, we fell just a hundred and ten signatures short of what was needed. The one silver lining about the terrible turnout of the 2014 general election was that it lowered our threshold significantly. So instead of needing thirteen hundred and three signatures, now we just need a thou, one thousand and sixty, yeah, one thousand and sixty-three. And we strongly believe that we have that number now of valid signatures, but now we're trying to go for a buffer. And so we're starting now to cut into that, and just want to extend an invite to anyone who hasn't signed the petition yet. I don't care what your party affiliation is. I think it affects all of us. This is our democracy that we're talking about, and we can get into specifics about, oh, as a Republican, of course, yes, a Republican is a form of democracy in one way or another. And if you're concerned, as I am, about the people's voice being flooded out by this massive amount of money being pumped into our campaigns, I strongly urge you to support this, at least the effort to put it on the ballot for people to consider, and hopefully you'll vote for it if it gets on there. So that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Anyone from the administration?
Good evening, Mr. President. I've had the unique pleasure of working closely with our Director of Law and our Chief of Police, and I know them both to be dedicated, hard-working public servants. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Mr. Marmy? Yep, Safety Director Spurgeon?
Thank you. I just want to give you a quick update on Department of Development. As you know, we're a hundred percent grant-funded. The majority of those funds come through the Housing and Urban Development Department from the U.S. federal government. And to be eligible to continue to receive those funds, we have to go through an annual assessment and evaluation for our department. It's a report called a CAPER, which stands for Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Progress. And we went through that again this year, and I just wanted to briefly give you a little bit of a feedback from HUD and how we're doing. Basically, the report says the city continues to perform in a timely manner, meeting program thresholds for CDBG obligations and expenditures, including program progress, planning administration, and public service. In addition, benefits to the low and moderate income persons exceed HUD requirements. They conclude our report with, as a result of this analysis, we have determined that your overall 2015 progress is satisfactory, and your 2015 CAPER is acceptable. So we are in good standing. We'll continue to receive our funds, and most importantly, I'd really like to thank the staff that makes that all possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Our award-winning auditor, Mr. Johnson? I'll pass. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. And our honorable Law Director Sassen?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll pass.
Birthday boy haul. We've had kind of a lot of activities in the city in the last probably week and a half at least, and I want to thank all the citizens for supporting that. Canal Market dedication, the farmer's market was phenomenal last Friday. We had a nice Memorial Day event down at Cedar Hill Cemetery, which was looking great, a great turnout with that, and a lot of people involved with that. We had commencement exercises across the city, and real good as our kids move on, our young adults move on that way. And recently, I won't steal Mr. Marmy's thunder, we surely want to congratulate Newark Catholic Boys Baseball for a thrilling finish and a great state championship division four win. So with that, and the Works is going to have a twenty-year, twenty-year, twentieth anniversary event with a Jerry Mock exhibit on the second floor. I kind of helped put a plane up there on the second floor here about a week ago, so I think it's a pretty neat event that everybody will enjoy quite a bit. And again, on the eighteenth. So a lot going on with the summer coming, and I encourage people to enjoy the upper events. That'll go ahead and pass.
Thank you, Mayor. Next, we have council miscellaneous comments. Ms. Hall?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I want to introduce my wife and my good friends Glenn and Brenda Hurt from Bloomington, Illinois, who are visiting us and have been with us for quite a long time. We've been good friends for over fifty years, and they're here to see what we do tonight. I appreciate that. And again, of course, we should be really pleased with what's happened with Newark Catholic, with Lakewood Girls, the Grand, the Runners. We've had quite a, quite a weekend, the opening of everything. Understand, Strawberry Festival, except for a little rain, went, went well, and so with that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Thank you for coming. If you've been friends with Curtis that long, I'm not sure how they let you in here, but thank you for coming. Mr. Marmy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I need to call a Finance Committee meeting. A lot of talk about potholes and this evening. I would just urge all citizens and anybody that sees a pothole, go on to see, click fix, and make sure that it's identified. Our street department does a great job of fixing potholes when they know they're there. A lot of times, they can't drive every single street, and they don't recognize that a pothole is out there until somebody tells them. So I encourage everybody to just make sure to utilize that process in order to make sure that they're aware of it. I also want to comment that, you know, even though I am not in the judicial branch and I'm not in the administrative branch, I appreciate those that are, like our police chief and like our law director, and I trust them to do their jobs responsibly and with the utmost professionalism, and I have seen nothing but, nothing less than that, and I appreciate it. Finally, yes, I was very, very pleased this weekend, although I thought I was going to have a heart attack at times, I thought I was going to throw up. As a player, I never got that nervous, but when your son is on the mound and all eyes are on your son, it's a little nerve-wracking. So, but the team did a fantastic job. It was a team effort and just a good group of young men, and I've invited them to come two weeks from tonight. The mayor has graciously extended that offer, just like we have done in the past, so they are planning on coming two weeks from tonight to recognize their accomplishment, and I would encourage anybody that can make it to definitely make it down here. And I'm sure we'll talk a little bit more about some of the different things that evening. And I want to welcome you. I've been to Bloomington a number of times because I too am employed with State Farm, and it's a little less windy here at times, but we still get the storms if you've been here for a while. So with that, I pass.
Thank you, Mr. Marmy. Hold up your, hold up your right hand here, Mr. Marmy.
This is, this is actually-
This is last year's-
This is last year's ring.
Now we'll get another one of that.
And as I told my son, I need to wear this one because I'm going to wear the other one. So I'm going to get some, some wear and tear out of this one.
Thank you, Mr. Marmy. Mr. Raff?
Thank you. To congratulate Newark Catholic, Coach Marmy and his son. A great job. As far as potholes go, obviously, before you have game, you have to have pain in both cases. And I want to remind everybody that we're going to be going through a little bit of pain on West Main for the next few days, possibly week or so, but we are getting a lot of good, a lot of road paving done in that area, in the area of the hospital, and that's going to be great. Need to call a Service Committee meeting, and with that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Raff. Mr. Ruleta?
Thanks, I'll pass.
Mr. Blake?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. First, want to give some thank yous. I want to thank Director Spurgeon and Director Rhodes, had some constituent issues over the last time period, and so I want to publicly thank them both for their assistance with, I think many of the times, our number one priority is dealing with constituents, so thank you for your follow-up and for your thorough care there. I do want to, as Mr. Curtis was welcoming visitors, do want to welcome Joe Begney. He's president of the Reynoldsburg City Schools, School Board, and so thank you for attending our meeting tonight. And then I also want to say some words about, you know, that during my time on council and working with Director Sassen, he comes off as a rough guy, but he does professional duty, so, you know, I want to thank him for that, and not sure where that woman was coming from, but I always seem to be, worked well with him. And of course, our chief, ever since he's been our chief, and even before he was our chief, I've always worked well with Marion, thought he's done a fine job for this community, and so want to echo the comments there. We have two good people there. I think I want to call an Economic Development Committee meeting for next meeting, so I will call that, and then with that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. Very nice comments, too, about the chief and Mr. Sassen, I agree. Mr. Bub?
Thank you, Mr. President. I need to call Personnel Committee meeting for next Monday. I'd like to wish the mayor a happy birthday again, and also congratulations to your son who graduated and has accepted into the Merchant Marines. It's quite the honors. Congratulations both you and your wife, Helen, with that. And nice job, Mr. Marmy. Once again, you guys do a great job with the program, playing some tough talent during the year, getting yourself ready for the state playoffs, so congratulations to Tanner, a nice young man, so he'll do well. And with that, I will pass. Thank you.